Good evening, welcome to the March twentieth, two thousand twenty-five Select Board Meeting. And the first thing on our agenda is to take action on the minutes for February twentieth, February twenty-seventh, and March sixth. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion in chapter minutes.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes. So the Fire Station Advisory Committee, we would like Bruce S. Al- Albrecht?
Yeah.
Citizen-at-large to be appointed to the committee. Can I have a?
I'll make a motion, we appoint him to the committee.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Take action on seasonal alcohol license renewals for BSO and Tanglewood, the trustees of reservations, NOMCAE and Berkshire Theatre Festival on the main stage. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we grant the licenses.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Take action on the one-day alcohol licenses for Berkshire Botanical Gardens on March twenty-eighth and April fourth from five to seven P. M. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we grant the licenses.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we have a cyanobacteria partial advisory project presentation by Dr. Kenny. So would you like to do that, Dr. Kenny?
Thank you, Jamie. I'll be very quick. The, in two thousand eighteen, the lake had a first-time in a long-time cyanobacteria bloom. And as a result of that, the Board of Health had to issue an advisory that closed down the whole lake for about three weeks. It rerouted the Josh Billings canoe part, and it really was a nuisance to a lot of people. After that, I went around and I looked at a bunch of lakes in Massachusetts and Connecticut and even in New York. And in some cases, I saw that the lakes were covered with the bloom everywhere. But in a lot of cases, it seemed as though there was only a small portion of the lakes that were involved in this. So I contacted DPH, and I asked them if there was a guideline for issuing an advisory for only part of the lake instead of the whole lake, like we were directed to do. And they told me there wasn't any. I spoke with Logan Bailey, who was in charge of this for the state. And he, but I asked him if we got something together scientifically, could we, could we propose this to him to possibly use this on the bowl if we, in the future? And he said yes. So shortly, Mike, you want to just show a couple of slides of some, some lakes with blooms on? I just want to illustrate this idea very briefly of a lake with just a partial bloom on it. These are, these slides are from Dr. Ben Burpee from GZA. He's the head limnologist there.
Let me just give me.
Okay, well, I'll keep going.
Keep going and not throw up in a moment.
As it turns out, shortly thereafter, we had a suspected bloom in the south part of the lake. It was between the island and the outlet. I took a look at it. I didn't think it was cyanobacteria, but I couldn't be sure without testing it. So I called up Chuck Cardillo, and I asked him if he could help me because I didn't want to issue a full lake advisory and then, you know, have it shut down for three weeks and find it was, it was, it was a false alarm. So he had Gary Feinerman, Kleinerman, put up a bunch of buoy markers. Mike Nathan had a drone fly over there, and it seemed like it was very limited. And we put these markers up all around it. Here, for, here, for example, you can see us, a lake that has, it's, it's on the lower part, you'll see on the left, it says September twenty-first, two thousand nine. That's the left side of this, of this lake. And on the right side, you'll see that there's a bloom and there is a containment, it's a floating containment barrier that separates the two. I think you'll see that there's quite a difference. Now, before they put up the barrier, you can see it on the left and the right there, too, as being different things. I believe this is a reservoir. This kind of strategy is used on reservoirs to isolate the cyanobacteria from the place where they have intake for, for drinking water. Mike, are they, did Ben give us any other slides in this?
Yep.
At any rate, so we, Mike Baphoni went in, and here's another one, you know, where you can see the bloom is on the, on the right and the clear water is on the left. It has a little bit of barrier there. Now, to start out with the, the demarcation between the two things, when I saw them on lakes that didn't have these barriers, wasn't that clear. But if you can understand, that's enough, Mike. I think we got enough, we got the picture there. On one side, you have it, and on one side, you don't. So now Mike Baphoni tested the, the water, took it down. It took two days for us to get the results back. But they were negative. So we stopped, we didn't, we didn't have a, an advisory. But I, Chuck then went on with, he and I to get funds to get a colorimeter, which is a device that can be used on the spot to test to see if you have cyanobacteria or not. If you don't have cyanobacteria, then, then we're all set. We don't have to issue an advisory. If we do, then, then we get, you know, go into the full advisory gear. But that's a very helpful thing that we got as a result of that partial thing that we did. But I was really convinced, as a result of the way we did things, that if we eventually did have a, a partial lake advisory protocol in place that the DPH approved of, that we had the team that could, that could implement it. You know, we could just get it out there, do it, and we would, we would, we would do it right. So I moved on with Ben Burpee, and we started to work on a scientific protocol. And last fall, we presented this to the Stockbridge Bowl Stewardship Commission, and we got feedback from them. And Jamie invited us, Jamie Minachi invited us back last week, and we presented the final version of it at this stage, and it was endorsed by the commission. They, they thought it was a good idea to go forward with this. At that meeting, Patrick White had a very good suggestion. He suggested that we get, since this has regional, rather than just lake-specific benefit, in other words, the, the DPH and several states have told me they thought it was a very good idea. Patrick suggested that we look, we're at the stage of looking for grant money, that we get a coalition of people together to do this from different areas. And that's what we're going to be working on at the present time. So first of all, I just wanted to tell you guys where we are with that. Secondly, I wanted to thank all of you, each of you, for the different inputs you had at different stages of this project to move it forward. And I'll keep you apprised, you know, when we get to the next level. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions?
Yeah, I, I think the point, Charlie, that I was making at that meeting was, was that it may be easier to get a grant if we include a lake within an environmental justice area, you know, so I specifically like, might suggest like Jim McGrath from Pittsfield for a note in Pontusac. And I'm sure Michael knows, you know, Jim. And, you know, it just, it just, for the state, it's easier, the more that you can kind of, you know.
And where do we stand with that meter where we need to be testing? Do we ever look into that, or?
Oh, yeah, we have that. That, you know, we actually, you know, you actually, you know, put aside the funds, and we bought it. And we have, we've actually, you know, gone through the protocol of learning how to use it. And, but we haven't had to use it. So there you go.
Charlie, this is good.
But you know, it was like a fire drill that we went through a long time ago. Very good. And, you know, fortunately, we don't have a chance to do a lot of fire drills on it.
Hey, Charlie, I'm sorry.
I think it was, it was two years ago when we purchased that, if I remember right. And we got through Tri-Town and Towns Elite, Lennox and Stockbridge, all chipped in.
I remember that.
By the spectrometer.
Yeah, yeah, I think eventually it became a community effort on it, and it was a good idea because obviously, we could use it in Laurel Lake, too, if they ever needed it, that would be.
Make sure you clean it off after.
So, so the, the big bloom, was that the whole lake, or was that more towards the island side?
Are you talking about the one in two thousand eighteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, you know, that was a pretty widespread bloom at the time. I.
It was a odd weather system that, you know, we had the rain, then we got the ninety-nine-degree temperature and.
Yeah, that's a typical scenario before these blooms occur. One of the, I think Michael Nathan brought this up, was a very good idea, was that, and of course, I don't know if we had the technology then, but we certainly do now, is to get one of those drones, and that's what we did the last time, to fly over and see where it is exactly. And then, when you combine that with the, the, the idea of placing the things you're going to test for the toxins and everything, it gives us a really good beginning basis for deciding where to put up these barriers. And these, if we were going to do that eventually, the barriers could be positive, or what I call positive or negative. In other words, we could put a barrier around the beach, for example, or we could put a barrier as a path going across the lake for people to do stuff in, you know, if they're going to do it, or, or we could just isolate the bloom if it was small enough to do it that way. And each of these ideas is part of what we're going to be trying to put together as a protocol that we can have the DPH sign off on eventually, to give us the right to do that as a Board of Health here, and it would be obviously in other lakes, too. And then we wouldn't have to shut down the whole lake, you know, and people could continue to do the things they like to do in the places safely. But it has to be safe. That's why we have to go through these, these steps.
And Charlie, didn't we have like a, a small bloom that was a partial lake shutdown in the last couple of years? Wasn't there like a really small one where we?
Well, that's the one I'm talking about that Chuck helped me out with, and that Gary Kleinerman put all of those things around it. It was down at the south end of the lake, between the island and the outlet. It was, it was, it didn't get that close to the beach, but it was, it could have, you know, but we, we put these stuff up. Obviously, if we had a barrier that we could, you know, one of these floating barriers, you know, you blow them up, we would put that between the island and the, on the shore there and protect the beach, you know, so it wouldn't go over there. But that, it wasn't, it wasn't really a bloom. That's the fire drill I'm talking about.
Okay. And I only bring that up because since we're now going to retain the Josh, it would be great if there was a way, if there was a, you know, something at just one little spot, if we could kind of, you know, protect our, our, our role in the race, you know, just at least have a plan in place, you know, to, to address that, if there was any way to address that, you know. I don't know if that's something that's possible, or you want to talk to Brian.
That's exactly, that's exactly one of the goals of this project, is I was very upset that we had to cancel the Josh canoe thing that time. And, and this is, that was probably the most motivating goal. But there were lots of other people doing other things on the lake that I think if we had had a partial advisory, or we had, if it was in that, that kind of a situation, they would have been able to continue to do the things they liked to do. Now, I'm not saying that we're always going to be able to do that. Sometimes, as I said, you know, when you look at some of these, sometimes a bloom will come up everywhere, and you just can't, there's no way to isolate it. But as, as I showed you with some of the, with those slides, and that, this happens quite frequently, sometimes the blooms are very localized. And if you have a localized bloom, why should we be shutting down the whole lake if it isn't warranted to do that? And that's, that's the whole point of this, is that we're looking to be able to do that. But we have to get substantial scientific basis in order to get the DPH to, to offer that as a potential guideline for lakes throughout the state.
Thank you, Charlie. That was very important.
And thank you all for your part. You all guys, all you guys helped me. Thank you.
So we would like to approve the Climate Leader Roadmap, which is a piece of the Green Communities' five-step program. Do we need to make a motion?
Yes, I can just go over it quickly. So you guys, last meeting, heard about the Stretch Code, which is part of becoming the Climate Leader. There's five steps to it. This, you have to have the vehicle policy, you have to have the roadmap, you have to have the statement by town meeting that was done at the last town meeting, and, and our purchasing policy. So we have, this is the last piece, other than town meeting, which would have to adopt the Stretch Code. So the roadmap program, we were able to get in on this as one of the first communities trying to become a climate leader, that you are aspiring to beat the goal of twenty fifty, to decarbonize your buildings. This is just a roadmap. So we have this entire program, which, what we did is, we were able to get a grant, we worked with our consultants, and we've been able to, with, and through D O E R. What it does is it summarizes the entire community. We had to go through, I'll give you an example, like, we looked at the emissions of each of the buildings, how much emissions is the baseline for each one, what's coming out. And then they looked at each individual building themselves, which is our municipal profile. And you can see right here is one of the key ones showing two thousand eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, our different use of electricity, gas, oil, diesel, and, and then regular gasoline in our vehicles. These are all the ones. We have really no oil happening, but gas is one of them. Now, nineteen and twenty was when the DPW building was, one was condemned, and the other one was being built. Things weren't quite there. So you see it dipped there. There was also a dip in twenty-one during COVID, and twenty, you can see where it's at. We have seen a little bit of an uptick in our electric use and our gas use, but that's also the new DPW building that came online in twenty twenty-two. So what they did is they looked at each of the buildings, they looked at the year they were built, the square footage, this is town hall. And then what they do is they look at each of the buildings, and then they look at, coming up with best practices for eliminating onsite as we go forward. So we're estimating that between twenty thirty and twenty forty, that somewhere in that period, we'll have central station, we'll probably have to do something with their heat and their systems, along with the wastewater treatment plant, and the highway garage. Town Hall is between twenty forty and twenty fifty, and then the water treatment plant is there, wastewater is the other one. So what these will be is, these are all aspirational. So as we hit these times, when we end up with a system goes down, we're going to look at the best system, just like you guys stated about our vehicle policy, where we're going to look at, can we go to a full electric? If not a full electric, can we go to a hybrid electric, hybrid, or conventional, depending on the needs that the buildings are facing. It doesn't force us to do any of these. What it does is we're committing to look at these. So by twenty thirty, twenty forty, we know technology is going to be changing. By that time, you know, the central fire station was nineteen seventy-something, and the heat system in it. By that time, we're probably looking at a replacement sometime between twenty thirty, twenty forty, when we have to go for a replacement. But things can change, like if we build a new station, that station might be taken offline. So there's a whole bunch of things in here. So the overall, I'm not going to go through much more of that. The overall is just giving us a roadmap that's going to take us to twenty fifty, identifying that as things become available and as things start breaking down, so as our furnaces get older, you know, this building, the furnace is seventeen years old, by twenty fifty, you know, there are twenty-five years, we'll be probably need to replace it. So at that time, we're going to take a look at what our options are. It really doesn't do more than that. So this, we're asking that you adopt this. It was worked on by the Green Committee. All the departments had to do their analysis of their buildings. And there's been a lot of work put into this, also with our consultants and the rest. And this will be the fourth one checked off our list, as town meeting agrees to adopt the Stretch Code.
Then we have that.
The specialized Stretch Code, then we become Climate Leader, and we become available for additional funding sources that could be used to meet this goal. So, if you have any questions?
No, I think this part's good. So if this, say, the last one doesn't pass, we won't be certified?
Right.
The roadmap.
Well, we'll still be doing.
It's an aspirational document. I think we'd still use it because it basically just says, we're going to attempt to do these different options, such as look at geothermal again, maybe, and by twenty forty, twenty fifty. But we know even those technologies have so changed, you know, we'll look at what's the best, most efficient one is for this building. Our other buildings, we'll probably be looking very much at solar. But because of the slate roof and the historic nature of this building, we're not going to be dropping solar on the top of this one. So, you know, we'll be looking at the different options. So we'd, we'd still use this. It was a fully paid for.
I mean, I think this is, this is really, this part's good, yes.
Yeah.
Can I ask a couple of questions? What's the, on the, the, the five-dollar sign budget for, on this building's insulation, I think it is, or was it weatherization? So we have weatherization is three-dollar signs, and we have five-dollar signs under insulation and building controls.
Yeah, so.
What does that look like in terms of actual dollars?
Yeah, so, so that's their little symbol of how things will potentially cut. They don't know. That's the bottom line. You know, so basically, it's sort of like going to a, it's, it's, no, they, that just.
How do you guess?
It's like going to a restaurant where they have, the rooms just say one dollar.
The rooms I'm asking.
So that we don't have a budget? No, none of this has a budget. That would be developed when we actually go to do these projects. But it is saying, like, insulation is one of our huge costs, building controls, HVAC, electrification of this building. You're basically, that is actually a prior geothermal system, but these are going to be substantial costs. The weatherization, as you can see, is a middle cost at three, and then anything that was one, one or two, which we don't have, would be small cost. So they're really not trying because most of these, we're talking, will be happening after twenty forty. So, you know, what things will cost, what they'll be, we know that in the scale of things, those will be the more expensive ones.
Okay, so, so did you have a chance to read that message from Josie Alpert?
Uh, no, I haven't.
Okay, so Josie works for MMA. I got invited to be in EEA, which is Environment and Energy, a focus group on Tuesday. And they have specific questions that are exactly related to this topic. You know, around climate resilience, can we have any unmet capital construction projects that, that we might be looking for grants or, or revolving loan fund at like zero one percent? Is there anything you can think of that we might?
Patrick, does this have anything to do with the roadmap?
Yeah, it is exactly the roadmap. It has to do with climate resilience.
Yeah, so, you know, it, well, it can go well beyond that because.
Also could be culverts.
Right, which, which, we definitely have culverts. We have undersized culverts, as has been pointed out in our culvert study. All those, yes, we have plenty of programs.
I mean, I would take this offline, but they're asking for the one or two most important things that we would like to ask for.
Patrick, I think we could do this.
Can you give me a second? What is the big deal? It's only five oh seven.
Patrick, you were late to the meeting even.
I was late to the meeting because I had to work, Jamie. I'm really sorry. And certainly, I'd already sat through Charlie's presentation, so I knew what he was going to present. In fact, he even commented that I've already given him good feedback. So if we have any other projects that are high priority, I would like to hear about them before Tuesday, if that's possible.
Sure.
Thank you. Yes. Boy, that even took thirty more seconds. Amazing.
Thank you. So can we approve the Climate Leader Roadmap? Do I have an option? No, we need a motion.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So we are into the fiscal year twenty-six budget, operational and capital.
I'll send around everything for you guys. Let me close out some of these. Well, I might have fallen my favor. All right, so, you know, as you guys are looking, I think I might have brought this up, the tab that says notes tells you what changes have been made to date. We still haven't got the meals tax. I hope to have it by next week. What's happened with the third quarter of the meals tax, and that will affect budget. As we talked about it in the last meeting, quarter one was off, quarter two bounced back to right where it would be normally. It was actually up by one percent, and we're waiting to see what.
Occupancy as well?
Yes, rooms and meals tax. Yep. So once we get the third quarter, we can make that adjustment to the meals, and that will tell us more about how it will impact the overall budget. Other than that, there hasn't been a lot of changes to the budget. I fixed the pay issue with the animal patrol, and then we, I added a line for the ashboard disease treatment at Ice Glen, because that's going to pretty much be an annual event. So instead of paying that on free cash or something else, that actually is a constant reoccurring event. So overall, where the budget sits right now is, like I said, it's, it's three-point-six percent increase to the tax rate, even though when people didn't read the budget, they'll still see that those are, shows a higher one, but that's because we're building, bringing down the building department. And that number should be pushed down if the meals and occupancy tax bounces back from the, in the third quarter.
But it might be pushed up if?
It could be pushed up. Well, right now, I've already reduced it. So right now, it's showing a reduced amount, because I took the estimate eighty-nine percent, and then, of, of, I mean, seventy-nine percent instead of the full amount. So did you guys have any questions at this point? We have the upcoming budget meeting coming up. I think the only thing that is, seems to be a big discussion on this part of the budget is the Fire EMS presentation that you guys have already heard, and will be presented to the first time for the, to the Finance Committee. And I'll be doing that first at the Finance Committee. The second piece will be whether or not we begin to dip into OPEP for retiring benefits. So that's one of those discussions. Yeah, it'll be a discussion.
It's Wednesday.
I mean, with the Wednesday or so Thursday?
Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday, the twenty-sixth at six. Yeah.
Not only questions, but I wanted to bring up the idea of returning the assessor's payment to be the same, and, and not to give the other elected boards a stipend. I know, we talked about it, it felt rushed. And I thought with the letter coming from, I think it's in our packet, from Michael Blay, about the duties from the, that the assessors do, that we should be respectful because they do have a lot of education, and that we should go back. I don't believe they want insurance, so I don't think that's an issue. And, I don't know.
You want to talk about it?
Let me, I'm making a motion first, mate.
No, you guys aren't subject to Robert's rules, so if you want to talk about it, you know, we're.
Okay. Yeah, I could learn more about, I could know what the other elected officials are doing on their stuff to warrant, you know, the five hundred, and get more detail on all the, all the departments. So I would be in favor of returning it back to the way it was and investigating it a little deeper and come up with a, a better permanent solution.
I just, I, I, I read with interest the letter. I think the letter's great. No one was, I believe, impugning the hard work that Mike or, or this Mike, that matter does, or certainly not what the assessors do. It's work. However, all right. I don't work for Mike Blay, certainly. I don't work for the assessors. I don't work for you guys. I work for the taxpayers. And what I want to understand is really simple. How much time goes into it? And what's a reasonable fee to get paid for it? And we didn't get that answer. We got a laundry list. The, the class that you have to take to be an assessor is ten half-hour modules. It's five hours you take it once. Okay? I'm not saying that that's not great. I'm, I'm glad that we have awesome assessors. But what we, but what we have is a situation where this guy here, who is the highest-paid employee of this town, gets seventy-five bucks an hour. All right? And I just want to understand if it's fair. I don't even care if we decide if it's fair. I'd like them to decide if it's fair. I don't know how many hours it is. It was a reasonable request to be made. And frankly, I did not appreciate either the town employees or the assessors suggesting that bringing upward is fair for compensation has anything to do with retribution or anything else. I thought that was outrageous, frankly. And, and I, and I feel like what we need is to just take a look at every single line of this budget. We have kept this budget at a one-percent annual raise and appropriate the last five years. This year, we're talking about three and a half percent. You know how much work that is? I have about a hundred and fifty line items. You know how much work that is? I have about a hundred and fifty line items in this budget I have gone through and either addressed with this guy publicly or in these sessions. All right? That was one of a hundred and fifty line items, and for people to interpret that has to have anything to do with RTE or anything else was absolutely outrageous and offensive. You know, and, and I just would like to put on the record that the only thing we're asking is what's fair. Now, personally, I don't much care whether we leave it at three thousand or four thousand or a thousand or whatever it is. I absolutely care about the insurance, because the time to address the insurance is exactly when there is nobody in the, in these boards who are on the insurance. Because as soon as somebody gets elected to the board of assessors and qualifies for insurance and needs it because they have a kid, and it costs us twenty-five thousand dollars a year, then for us to claw back becomes punitive. And I'm not willing to do that. So the time to have that conversation is now. And Michael came up with, after that meeting, a great solution to the insurance. It turns out in two thousand and seven, this board, of which none of us were on, voted that, that the floor on the insurance is twenty-eight hundred dollars. Right now, the assessors make more than that. So all we have to do, if we don't want to address the change in the pay of the assessors, which by the way was not something we understood at the last meeting when we talked about this, the only thing we have to do is raise that twenty-eight hundred dollar cap to like five thousand dollars so that people can get a stipend without having a liability to town at up to twenty-five thousand dollars per person, which is what insurance costs for any of the elected boards we decide to give a stipend to. And I'm sorry if some people get offended that we're doing our job here to raise these issues, but that is our job. Our job is to raise and appropriate. It is the primary responsibility of this board, and, and I'm not going to shy away from doing that job. It is exactly why we have had relatively low tax increases for the last five years. Thank you.
Chuck, do you have anything?
Uh, I agree with the insurance end. Um, because that's a lot of money for somebody making twenty-one dollars to get a twenty-three thousand dollar a year insurance.
But I don't think they wanted insurance.
No, but this thing, however.
But that can be a policy change.
Yeah, we need to do a policy change. So let's look into a policy change on that.
It's easy. We just make a motion and raise the five thousand bucks. We, we already figured it out. And it wasn't any. Yeah. I'm making a motion right now. Can we vote on some notes on the agenda? Or you need to connect?
That's not on.
No, we have to put it on the agenda.
Health insurance, that would be a separate one.
All right.
But what you can.
Put it on the next agenda.
We put it on the next agenda.
That would be great.
If you want to handle it at the next one, um, what are you doing with the elected board compensation? Because right now, we put five, in this budget right now is five hundred to every elected board per person. Or are we returning it to where it was before, where only the board of selectmen and the board of assessors are paying?
I would just like to know how many hours a year going to doing the job? And if it's a hundred hours, forty bucks, I guess I can live with that. If it's twenty or thirty or forty hours, I think that, you know, we used to have assessors that would go out in the field and do Mike's job for him. I just think, I think it should be fair. And frankly, I don't think the assessors deserve more than you, and certainly not more than us on an hourly basis. I make about five bucks an hour, but I'm not expecting anybody to get paid five bucks an hour. But, you know, just what's reasonable? Let them answer the question. But I would like, I would rather us table this until we get an answer as to what the job actually entails. I have no idea. It is not imputing the job they do to ask the question. It's doing our job. Because the way we have kept this down for all these years, and we've been sitting on this board, is we ask these questions. We ask questions on every single issue. So, you know, it's not about whether they work hard or whether they do a good job. Of course they do. We've got a great team. All the boards are great.
All right, so draft warrant for annual town meeting.
And where are we standing?
So do you want to leave it, Jamie, tabled, or do you want to have a vote now?
We can't vote now because it's not on our, um, agenda.
No, the, the.
The budget isn't.
You mentioned about returning the pay. Right now, in the budget, the part we can talk about is.
Oh, right.
We did reduce the board of assessors to five hundred and gave five hundred to all the elected boards. You guys voted that at the last meeting.
Right, but we still can, it's still, we have.
We still have time to undo that. We don't have to undo it right now.
Actually, I would like to address the other boards. I think that.
I, oh, go ahead.
Kate Fletcher makes a good point, that she has some out-of-pocket expenses to print out all the stuff for the planning board. If we were to change the insurance level to five thousand, giving the other boards, you know, or showing some discretion on what boards get the five hundred bucks, which isn't a lot of money, you know, printing supplies for some printers are really expensive, that is really just, you know, you know, reimbursing people for, for some of the expenses of doing their job.
I'm a.
Why is she paying out-of-pocket for printing to have?
Because we print a whole.
They have a secretary. They have a secretary. We pay a secretary. She can print everything at town hall. Everything they need.
I, I, it's completely, I, I print.
And we can take away the secretary.
Can I finish this sentence?
Of course you can, Patrick.
I, I print easily five hundred or thousand pages myself a year because I like to print everything out, because I, it's easier to read. And especially with plans and stuff, it's way easier to look at. I don't have time to come in and do, and have Teresa be my printer, and I never do it. It's just one of those things that I do because it's easier if you have a printer at home. And I, and I think that.
We all do that.
I know we do that, but why are you suggesting that Kate shouldn't do it?
If we all do it, then we all do it, like.
We get paid.
Right, we have a secretary also, who prints all of our papers.
We have at the minimum of five thousand, five hundred dollars each that covers some of those expenses for us. And for another board to ask us for five hundred dollars, who's elected to cover a similar thing that they're actually paying with their own money on, I don't think it's unreasonable. Which is how we started this conversation at, at the beginning, was because we had that request on planning board.
Right. But then we have to give money to all elected boards.
All right. And that would be thirteen. It'd be an extra sixty-five hundred bucks.
And you just said we need to be careful with money.
I am certainly not going to pick a fight with any of these boards over the five hundred bucks, let alone four thousand. Life is too short to get attacked over and over again. We all have, have experience. But I don't think it should be an either or. I think the question is, assessors is fine if you want to leave it alone. It's fine with me as long as we fix the insurance loophole. Um, and on the five hundred dollars, I absolutely support that request. Because it, because it's a big liability around insurance going up.
You don't have to make a decision tonight. It could be something, if you're thinking about what you want to do, you can. Or if you want to see if there's any other comments.
Can we get on the planning board and the other committees on what they actually spend at home and their things and what they do? I mean.
We can, we can ask.
And to get financial analysis, okay, you print your stuff and get financial analysis for somebody who doesn't print on a piece of paper.
So wait, so, so we're really debating whether, rather than.
I'm just.
The planning board is a large board, and then you had to mention that then we have to give all elected boards, which means parks and rec.
That was my proposal.
And, um.
We don't have to do anything.
So.
We, we have parks and rec, where are elected boards? Parks and rec, board health, you know.
Jamie, Ron.
Ron.
Constancy should come in, Ron.
You should come on.
Really?
Hey, you guys, you guys haven't done a printing house too.
Yeah, yeah. For the most part, we come into town hall and do our printing. Sally does some printing at home. Occasionally, a rema paper might be involved for the, those printings over the course of a month or two months or three months. But why does everybody on the different boards who receives a printed or an email or some computer, come, computer communication need a stipend if they, if, only for like printing? Because most of my people don't print anything. I print quite a bit, just because I forget it otherwise. Um, so if it's for expenses, let them submit an expense account. You know, that's.
They tried, and that wasn't proved at town halls, I understand it, right, Michael?
What do you mean?
I don't know if you ever recall seeing that coming to us.
Yeah. Because I know, like, if you go to a, a meeting, you can put in travel, you know, your car mileage.
The problem with home printing is, is that the use of your printer at home for personal, for everything else, it's hard to say.
Yeah, you could run a business out of your home by doing mailing or something like that. I don't think anybody does, but. So I don't understand why you would do a stipend for every member of every board. Um, if someone says the piece for all my members, I print out an agenda and, you know, other paperwork for the present meeting, so, okay. But you could send that to Jennifer, Jennifer can print it.
Yeah, you can.
She's sent paid to do that.
Yeah.
That's her job.
Or what's your name for?
So isn't the, uh.
And Sally's the secretary. She does it for conservation.
Paid to do it. Let her print it out and send them back.
If you have a secretary, secretary, that's.
And Teresa does it for us.
I don't see the purpose of me. I'm not an elected official, so I'm not included in this. Though I do spend more time on the road than most of the other boards. To get a stipend for printing out materials for meetings. If I receive them, I review them, I look them on, look at them on, and the notes and the minutes. And then I print it out, so I have something hard copy.
Yeah.
But I'm not looking for money for that.
I, you know, we have like twenty, twenty-five elected officials. I don't know which ones, a couple bucks is matters to or doesn't matter to. I do know we have a fifteen million dollar budget, and if somebody, if, if some, if a chair of the board is saying that, that she'd like a little help paying for her expenses to do her job, I don't know what her financial situation is. I don't think it's. In, in the grand scheme of things, it's not a huge deal, any of this stuff. This, the budget busting thing on these boards has to do with whether, by getting paid, they qualify for insurance. That blows up the budget. None of this other stuff is going to have a material impact on the budget.
You can, from the sounds of things, you can.
I know, we've solved it after we talked about this the first time. I know, that's why I can't understand why we're getting so attacked.
So, so the only real issue is then, the stipend for every elected official. Every elected official does.
To me, if you're going to spend money and doing things at home, put us, do an expense report.
Or, or put down the.
There's five dollars.
One rema paper for months of July or something like that. Oh, I don't, I don't really see how you can justify a stipend for every member of every board.
Right.
Thank you, Ron. So we can table it for next meeting, which will be the, I believe it's.
Eighteen seconds. What are you talking about with the finance committee? Get there and put, and decide then. We can vote then, can't we?
It's not on the exempt, right?
Uh, it's part of the operational budget, yeah. We have.
Okay.
Tom has his hand up.
Who? I don't see any hands.
Yeah, Tom's hand was up. I think it's come down.
It's fine, um.
My, my hand was up, but then I took it down.
Okay.
All right. As far as the capital, so there's no other questions on the operational budget. Uh, to go over the capital budget, uh, really nothing has changed. Um, I did have the original architects for this building that did the, uh, uh, that did the renovations. I brought them in to help assist with putting together a maintenance plan over the next couple of years in order to take care of some of the issues. Uh, one of the areas of concern is the copula on top of this building. That was never renovated during the original renovations. And then we have scalding of some of the paint that was on some of the cement and things like that. So we did a walkthrough of the building. Um, they're going to get a proposal together. This first year would be setting, putting together a plan, tackle these. But we're not talking about doing, the, this isn't a huge capital one. It's just, if we get on these now, there are going to be some smaller costs. The other one that, um, I did reach out just today, because I noticed it coming in, is that the sign at the front of the building, when you go out and take a look at it, it looks like the ground's heaved a little bit and it's, the come off. It's a wooden sign, and it's definitely, I felt into it, starting to rot. So, uh, I reached out to Pixel, Pixly Signs that did the other signs. Um, and reached out, and I'm going to put together a cost to get that sign replaced. I did speak to Hugh about just reinforcing it for now, but we're going to need to replace that sign, because it is a wooden sign and it's actually started to rot. So, uh, yeah.
All right.
So I don't have a price on those, but those are two capital that I plan on adding to free cash this year. Uh, the engineering assessment for this building and a replacement sign for the, uh, for the front of this building, the main sign. So, and we'd make it out of a non, uh, not wood, but a, make it look nice, but make it a more permanentable, um, thing. Uh, also, we did get a price on what a hybrid cruiser would be. We've sort of gone back and forth. We could wait a year. I don't know if we should. Maybe we should just get it now and be ahead of the schedule. Um, and that, uh, we would probably wait till the end of the year.
Do they need a new car?
Yeah, it's right on the cusp, so we said we could push it back one more year if we wanted, or we could appropriate it and just wait to order until like late fall, early winter. Instead of waiting an entire, another year. Um, seventy-one thousand for the hybrid cruiser, so, um.
And how long do they last?
We typically rotate them on a five-year basis, so that we get them out of here while they're still under warranty. Uh, cruisers get used quite a bit and.
How's, how's the hybrid working when we have?
Yeah, good, good. It's got a nice high-power electrical system and a lot of, I, cruisers put a lot of idle time as they're sitting, and that's where it sits and works off the battery. Um, we're, we're not in favor of moving to the EV one yet, uh, just on worries of.
Michael, would it make sense for us to start to do similar to what we do with a, with a fleet schedule, where we're trying to kind of, you know, uh, normalize the, the impact over, over a number of years, do the same thing, but just slowly, to sort of put aside ten or twenty-five or fifty grand a year out of free cash to just, so that we have an ongoing fund to pay for any, any, um, repairs or, or maintenance that we need.
Well, we, we have extra money for general, smaller buildings.
Yeah, that's not the question I'm asking, though.
Oh.
You know, for like, you know, I mean, it's, it is a hundred and twenty-five year old building.
Right.
You know, and, and, and do we want to have kind of a, uh, a standard amount every year that we've been doing capital fund for the building so that we don't have extraordinary expenses when some of these bigger ticket things come up?
In general, we're not supposed to be just setting, I mean, you can set somebody around for, uh, for specific projects. So, yeah, you could create a building maintenance fund that could carry over, um. If not, we usually just work on within the operating budget we have for building repairs and maintenance. And then when we have individual items that fit, and this sort of dug it, uh, into the, we're going to have a discussion at the next meeting, so I'm presenting the whole select and finance committee for the capital budget, a, a new, more, a little, a slightly more comprehensive reserve policy for the town, which includes defining what capital projects are, what shouldn't be in the operational budget, what should be in capital projects and the rest, so. I can look at that.
I mean, if it's, if it's not a great idea, it's fine with me.
Yeah, I think it's.
For sure. You look at that copula, that's not going to be five or ten grand, twelve thousand, but off the budget. That's going to be, yeah, those are the kinds of projects that, that, you know, it, it has a, it has a one or two point impact on the tax rate if we just put it into operation that year. And, and, you know, I'd rather put in ten grand a year or twenty grand a year for free.
Well, just remember, well, pre-cap, if you do it for a specific person, it's an ATM who can carry over. But if it's in the operational budget, they obviously go away at the end of the year.
Right.
Um, the main thing is, right now, I'm going to be working with them over the next year to come up with a plan, a multi-year plan to address the issues around the building.
Okay.
And that, while they're small, so.
So you mentioned to go with the hybrid cruiser.
Yeah.
To wait till the fall. What's the, if it's in the budget, what's the difference when they get it?
Well, because the one right now is, chief thinks that we could push another year if we really needed to. So it was one of those things, but then I said, you know, do we want to get off the schedule? So we pretty much rotate our vehicles. The cruiser's off, we buy one and then one rotates off, but we end up with a gap here because we have four cruisers, we get them five years. We end up with a fourth, last year was a year we didn't have one, but chief even said we could go another year. Um, so.
Just with this one vehicle, or can we go another year with all the vehicles from just?
No, one, one. You're, you're pushing back the, the replacement one.
So if we buy two to the following year?
No, you'd be just still on.
One, okay.
Just that overall, the mileage was down the last couple of years, so the cruisers aren't quite as old as they need to. So I just told them, just get a price, because we've run into, last time we had to buy a gas one because the hybrids were unavailable, and they've become really popular as far as, uh, police cruisers for hybrid, so, um, that's the same. So that's the savings. In addition, the, the truck that we're buying under our E, our preferred vehicle purchasing policy, we are buying a hybrid for the water sewer department also. So, yeah, if we want to get in on the hybrid, we might want to just get another hybrid and stay on that schedule. So that might be one I might bring forward for consideration, but it is one that we don't have to tap right now. So those are the three things that aren't in the budget right now that I'm waiting to get some final numbers on. And then consider whether we put them in. I think the front sign is going to need to be replaced. It's probably going to start falling apart in the next year or so. So I want to get that replaced. And then, like I said, money for a, an assessment on this. I just met with them today, they're going to put a proposal together on helping us develop facing an envelope plan to just address. The minor issues that are around the town hall before they become major issues.
So town hall, we'll call them repairs?
Yeah.
Okay. And does that count, does, you know, the chipping on the side that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, identifying exactly why did it come off? You know, it's only done next year's, you know, what was it on? It's weird because it's only in some areas of the building and then other areas they didn't even treat it. So he, he didn't even know, he couldn't remember why it was only treated in some areas and not others, so. Yeah.
And are we able to, Teresa had submitted, I think Teresa or you did, Michael, the cost of the mailing of the town reports. Is quite costly if we, it's about nine thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So. If we didn't mail them out, but made them available for people, they could pick up a copy either here at town hall or maybe at the dump or both. That would save the town nine thousand dollars.
Well, that's. After printed too.
We still would have to print.
We would, yeah, within years, it's already been printed and getting ready to go, but.
We'd have to print, we could print a much smaller, make them available for those people that really want them. You know, we're not sure how many people keep them, whether they look at them once, throw them in.
Recycling.
The recycling or how, how it's used, it was brought up, it was brought up before by the select board. It was voted, it was voted to keep it, yeah.
Does it have to go to town meeting to post it out? Was this something?
It is a bylaw. Our bylaw right now states that we will mail out prior to the town meeting.
It has to be voted at the town meeting.
It would have to be a bylaw change.
Okay, that's what I thought, because you just can't, we can't vote not to.
Yeah, which leads into our next one, the warrant discussion. If you were to consider this, we could probably reduce it by quite a bit and just have some available for those people.
Quite a bit, we mail out maybe, there's only eight hundred voters and many are in the same house.
Spend seven thousand.
You spend none, seven thousand.
On the printing.
I'm, I'm asking what the per unit cost is on postage?
Uh, I, Teresa had it, it's.
I think the post it by Terry, isn't it?
One thousand, two hundred and thirteen, but the printing of the, the books.
But you print half.
Are seven thousand, five hundred fifty-two.
How many books did we print?
Two hundred and two, I think it's.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred is two hundred.
No, one thousand, four hundred fifty.
And cut that in half.
And then one thousand, four hundred and fifty get mailed.
Yeah, and then, and we post it on our website, we post, you know, take advantage of technology. Do we want to continue to do?
So you can really cut that, you can really cut that down.
I mean, the easiest way to cut it down is for someone to deduke the list because we don't have fourteen hundred and fifty domiciles with voters here. We don't, we know we don't. We, we've done this, we've done this in, in.
So among the people that list themselves as census and owning, we send it all.
I, I am telling you that there's not fourteen hundred and fifty, there's only sixteen hundred domiciles in this town.
Right.
And of that, at least forty-three percent, and some of them might be much higher, are non-voting residents. All right, the number of households need to get one of these books is not, people don't need to get two or three or four books per household. So you want to cut this down easily without changing the bylaw, you could just make sure we're only mailing one per physical address.
I thought anybody could get one if they were a resident of Stockbridge.
I gotta check, let me quickly check that, is it resident or is it?
Well, the bylaw says a resident and a voter, then if you're getting two, you get two, you get, it's the bylaws. Which is crazy, but I, I, I know your point is. But we can cut down.
I mean, you're basically talking about a six buck per unit cost to mail between printing and postage.
But how many do we print?
One thousand, four hundred and fifty.
Cut that down to a couple hundred and it's.
Yeah, but, oh, okay.
And it's online, it's on.
Are we getting that, we can't.
And they're four dollars and seventy-five.
By law specifically, a property, right, every property.
Owner.
Every property taxpayer in each household represented on the voters list in the last seven days before the annual town meet.
Represented on the voters list.
Right.
So it's only voters.
Yeah.
It's, but it's confusing because it says any resident.
It's not confusing. Each thing is a qualifier.
It says to every property tax payer. Mail otherwise to every property taxpayer and to each household represented on the voters list.
So have you taken?
And to.
Every taxpayer.
Second home.
And every voter.
Yes, that's why it's that many, that's why I, I knew there was a reason why I wanted.
And so, so just to play devil's advocate, you know, because the, the spirit of the law is that everybody gets one. None of, most of the seasonal residents are not here in April and May when we're mailing these out. So how are they going to pick up their book at the dump or at the library?
It's online.
We took it, right, if you wanted to change it online, this was just brought up, Teresa does.
Can you legally online?
There's, this is just a by, legally, you don't, you could just put it online, yeah. There's no, we, we could then have a couple of physical copies for people that wanted to pick up physical copies.
Do you get two?
No.
I don't either.
Yeah.
There's two voters at his household and two voters at my household, we only get one book. We don't get.
The way it's.
Yeah, so.
Well, because you share a household address.
Each household represented on the voters list.
Do you want to?
So again, bottom line question is, do we still want to mail out people?
Well, don't I have to change the bylaw to, are you, are you asking if this is a warrant change?
Because you have to end up having to be a.
You have to go on the warrant.
As a warrant change if this.
We, this year we have to do this.
Yeah, we're already doing this.
No, no, it's already being printed and sent out.
And I guess the question is.
One per household.
What's that?
One per household, you know how many houses are in town?
No, that's what we do, fourteen hundred, if we mailed every household.
Where would we get two then?
But then you said.
You don't, there was my confusion, we don't bracket into.
No.
Because they're going to the second home.
Actually says.
The second home.
Each household represented on the voters list, household. So that's one.
Well, but if you had an apartment.
That's why we do fourteen hundred of them. Because there's that many households.
Right, you don't get one.
Not breaking, so the question is just, do we just print copy, make, do like a couple hundred copies? And people want physical copies come in and we post it on the website? Or do people really want them mailed to their home?
And we are one of the only towns that is still doing this, except Dalton. So.
It's just something to consider.
Yeah. All right, I brought it up, it was in our packet. Anything else? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
We're doing the warrant.
Oh, okay, I thought.
Michael brought up something about signs off from. There's still signs in this town that are causing some irritation.
Like, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Those signs.
That one that got kicked down the road for losing.
Yeah, we never did discuss that.
Let's bring it up in another meeting.
Yeah, it's not on our agenda, but we can put it on another meeting.
I'll see you at the next meeting. Oh, see what we put on agenda, we got a lot of stuff going on.
We didn't promise the town that we, what was that, last November or February, that meeting? Thanks for reminding us.
Let's get through our budget season and we can kick it again.
Kick it again. So I put it into the, into your package, you guys have this draft articles. For the most part, these are just standard articles that we have every year. I did put in a draft article in case you decide to move ahead with the O P E D. Which will require two-thirds vote. And I also included as recommended by the treasurer, which I support, is a bylaw that allows the treasurer to, to. Allow the town trust funds to be invested according to master law, chapter two oh three C. It's a prudent investment rule, and this came into effect in two thousand and twenty-three calendar year, and now we can adopt it. I did send you from K P Law, they gave a, a report on what it is. It just gives us additional avenues to pursue investing our funds to maximize. They'd still be F D I C insured the rest, so, you know, it's just a provision there. You guys, like I said, have a copy of the, the report which talks about it. So I wasn't sure at this point if there's any other bylaws that, or I do not, not by law. Any other warrant articles you guys think need, we need to consider? And remember, depending on the timing of the planning board with their A D U one, that might end up being added to this town meeting.
Yeah, I, I would like to, I would like us to talk about, and I saw it was on the agenda, they got pulled, the seasonal communities designation.
We're going to put on the next meeting.
Okay, good, and I would support the one on the change to standards for investment of trust funds. This would allow us to, to basically double some of our interest rates with fully F D I C and private insurance. This is zero risk to the town and would, would earn us a ton more money. So I'm a K P Law E update, I absolutely support that, I'm happy to make a motion, put that on the warrant if you're looking for it.
We don't have to do it tonight.
Yeah, we can.
We can vote the meeting at the end of night.
Why do we have to talk about it again?
If you don't want to, then we can take care of it now.
Well, we can, can't we think about it and vote next meeting?
Sure.
Thanks.
All right.
Are there any other articles that you think were missing at this point or?
So just to clarify, you're saying that the O P E D decision is a two-thirds vote?
Yes.
So two to one people have, so why are we, just out of curiosity. Why wouldn't we put that in the town meeting and let people decide if it?
You guys can all, the decision of the warrant is strictly.
I understand exactly how this works, I'm asking a rhetorical question.
Oh, you are.
I've been, I've been sitting in this chair a while.
It's on, it's on next meeting with the finance.
I get it, but I think that, I, I personally don't see a downside where it requires a two-to-one vote for us to let the town decide if they think it's time to start to draw money. Rather than have us argue over it like we seem to do every year. How about we, if it's a warrant item, it's not like one of us is getting our, yeah, the town's going to decide. People can make their case to the voters.
As you notice, the only thing I will say to you guys is the placement of this article will be fee. If you decide to place it on, because it has to come before our operational budget. Because if it's voted down, we will have to change the operational budget on the floor of town meeting. So, just, this, then that's just strictly about where we.
We have to, right.
Right, we can't vote it after.
Then argument, you never take any money out because it.
After operational logistics.
Whenever we decide you first, is this something that would have to be approved every year?
Yeah, and every time you go to take money out of the trust, it would require a two-thirds vote by town. That is directly from the I G R that the state provides on this, which is the internal government.
I think we're the only town literally in the Commonwealth that's nearly fully funded, right?
I think there's only one or two other ones that are even near us, yeah.
Good.
But I would say if there's any other warrant articles that anybody wants to place on, like if we decide to change the wording of the town report one, that would have to become a warrant article. Just, I would say by the six, I need to know so I can make sure those proper languages in place. We should discuss that one again.
Michael, on the, on the, on the town book, did you guys ever check, uh, check in with N A S Core on that?
We've been using, what, what's our, color print and we can look at N A S Core.
Well, I just think if it's, it might be seen really cheaper and if they're all just saving money, you know.
Yeah.
I'm saying that with a town with, where the average age is twenty-five years old within the state average, people like things that are printed. And I think I probably, personally, if we put that in the warrant, we're going to get significant pushback. If you guys want to do it, we can let the voters decide, but not everyone is going to support getting rid of those books, it's a tradition.
Right.
So.
And if it's a.
Keep a way to print it, might be N A S Core.
So the difference, just so everybody's aware, N A S Core means instead of hiring a local business, you're.
They're hiring ambassadors.
The statements to, to do the work instead of a local business, so I don't know how people.
Yeah, I don't know how people feel about that either. Anything, Chuck, anything?
No, go to the next meeting. You know, be the one that will be a lot of answers, I don't know.
Motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you all for coming.